Yeah?
Done.
Yep, let's go. Oh, I didn't know, usually he says you're all set, so. Okay, I'll call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple of amendments to the agenda. We have an Item 6 Assessor's Section and 6A supplemental tree growth penalty discussion, and also an abatement to discuss would be 6B. And then down under 7, we've added 7G CMP pole permit request. Okay, any other amendments to the agenda? Nope? Okay, public comment? If you have something you'd like to ask, just come right up and sit so the mic can pick you up and...
And state your name, where you live from.
Meredith Weaver. I live at 28 Brown Road, Powell, on the Durham side of anything that needs to be fixed.
Okay.
I have a culvert issue that's been going on for five years. Shawn Bennett ignored it. I've been in contact with Calvin for the last two years. Nothing has happened. Cars are bottoming out and it needs to be addressed. I have been to a Powell Selectmen meeting. I've had the Selectmen come out and they told me, "Too bad, so sad, go to Durham." Here I am, I pay taxes to them, but I guess you take care of my end of the road. I don't know.
Is the portion of, so is where the issue is, is it, what side of the town line is it on?
The culvert has... It's on the Powell side, but the Powell Selectmen said it's a Durham issue.
My understanding is that we split Brown Road. And Todd, you may be able to help me on this one.
There's three towns that plow the road, so...
Yeah.
We split it someplace other than where the town line is?
Well, yeah, because I think the town line would be in the middle of the road.
But Durham plows to...
Oh, versus going perpendicular across the road.
Denial way, so Durham plows that end. Freeport plows the very end, and the Powell plows the other end. So this has been going on quite a while. And I just would like someone to take it seriously. Or if it's my responsibility, then I'll have an excavator come in and take care of it. Because it's pretty bad. I don't expect it to be taken care of overnight because it's been five years.
You're right.
But, you know, I keep hearing different things, so that's why I'm here. If it needs to be just tarred over and smoothed till something better can be done, what needs to happen is the culvert needs to go way down and the water runs level with the road, so it, the snow queues it up.
Okay, that's what, the culvert is heaving, that's what's happening.
Yeah. So...
And you're at...
28 Brown.
You're at 28 Brown. And the way you just described, like, which town is plowing which portion of the road, do you know which town is plowing that portion of the road?
Durham.
Durham, because that's why they're saying it's Durham.
Yeah. And Calvin's nice enough, but nothing's happening.
He hasn't done any ditching on that part, has he?
No, he told me to call him in May and that he would put it on the boards. And I'm like, "You're standing right here with the Powell Selectmen. You've worked both towns, why can't you do it? Why do I have to keep calling and being a pain? I mean, come on."
Now you know why. Well, we split...
Well, I'm trying to be difficult.
No, 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 it's, it's not an unreasonable request.
I mean, it's, it's bad. When the cars are starting to bottom out and it's this wide. I don't, I'm not in school zone.
Yeah.
I just, if, and that's fine, it just needs to be, throw some, you know, asphalt down or what's that? Cold patch, whatever. And then fix it in the spring. If you have to widen the end of the driveway, do whatever you need to do, I don't care. I just want to not have to go two miles an hour to get in the driveway and out of the driveway.
Is this the culvert that crosses your driveway, or does it cross the road?
No, it crosses my driveway.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's the culvert at the edge. What's that? It's the culvert at the edge, I just...
It's on the road.
Okay. Where the driveway and the road meet essentially?
But it's on a part that hasn't been ditched in a while.
If, if...
A long while. I've been there 14 years, so...
Haven't touched it.
Todd, if we, if, I know we, we plow it, right? I get, I get that aspect. But if, if the road was to be ditched or paved, would it be Durham paying for that section of road, or would it be Powell?
Yeah, I believe it's our section of responsibility.
Yeah, I think we don't know. I mean, this is probably going to be the, I think, we, we can follow up with Calvin and just get up to speed because he's not here. I don't know, I don't know, has he told you, yes, it's Durham's responsibility, or no, it's not Durham's?
It was supposed to be done last October. He was going to take care of it when they were doing the road. It never happened, then he came out with Powell Selectmen. And then they said, "We'll take care of it in May." Well, it's August.
Yeah.
It's on the part of the road that's our responsibility, from the top of the hill to the, up over the hill to the stream that's done, where Powell just rebuilt their part.
So do we have, do we have any sort of documentation of the agreement on who's taking what portion of the road, who's responsible for what portion?
There was a lot of research done because Powell was trying to determine whether or not they were paving part of Durham's road, in which case Durham would have had to pay them money. So Calvin did all the research, and if, if her portion is on the portion that wasn't paved, I suspect that's hers.
Okay.
I mean, that's Durham's, and so...
Okay.
Yeah.
So that doesn't seem to be in dispute. It's just a matter of, it hasn't been done yet.
I don't think it's in dispute.
Yeah, so the part that Powell did, they ditched the Durham side. And put in all relevant culverts.
Okay. All I can tell you tonight is that we'll follow up with Calvin and, and we'll get back to you shortly, within a few days of, at least about what the, what the next steps are.
Yeah, because I've called and left messages and they just go unanswered.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully, uh...
And I know he's busy, I get it.
Yeah, hopefully now that he's Road Commissioner just for Durham and we've recently hired a new code enforcement officer, that that's going to take some pressure off him and he'll be able to, you know, get to things like that, so...
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, thank you.
Meredith. Could you just write your phone number there for me?
Did you have something? Yeah, come on up.
Okay, thank you.
Mine's similar. I need a culvert because...
Could you, so just, your name and where you're from?
I'm Beckett Straball, I'm from 427 Runaround Pond Road, Durham.
427 Runaround Pond?
Yeah, it's a long one.
Okay.
So we don't have a culvert and we need one. Calvin has been out to look at it and I just, it was about a week ago. I just want to make sure that it's...
At the end of your driveway, same type of thing?
In front, under, yeah.
Yeah, under the driveway where it meets the road, that's what you're looking for?
Yes. We have a mosquito field now and it's eroding part of the leach field, like, right down the side. It was about six inches, now it's about a foot. So it's a concern.
Was there a culvert there when you built you guys' houses and they took it out when they did Runaround Pond, or they just...
We've only been there a year. I don't exactly know. There hasn't been one.
Okay, since you've been there, okay.
Yeah. And they've been doing construction and they didn't touch it.
Okay. Have you had any conversations with, with Calvin about this already?
Yeah, he came to look at it, but I just want to make sure it's...
And did he give you any indication of, like, what did he tell you at that time?
He said he'd get in contact with me on Thursday or Friday and then spoke with him, I think, again on Wednesday, last week.
Okay.
And he said he'd have to have an engineer out to look at it.
Okay.
But I haven't heard anything else. I don't know if he has any contact info, so I just want to...
Okay.
Make sure it's addressed.
All right, we'll follow up with him on that one as well. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Just a question about the website. The last Selectmen's meeting that's been posted, I think it's like May 30th or May 31st, you know why...
That's an excellent question. I've had some similar questions myself, too.
Oh, you mean the, the videos?
Yeah.
Shannon does that, and I don't know how to do that, so maybe I need to see if I can get Shannon to tell me how to do that.
Before we had this website, there used to be, you know, if you didn't watch the video, then you could read the minutes. And I, I can't find those anywhere.
Well...
They're not posted anymore?
No, the minutes are posted. I'm not sure, to be honest, where I am on the minutes.
I think, to you, I think you raise excellent questions. And one, a, a future agenda item is, is going to be the Board discussing what our expectations are for meetings and minutes. Like, we'll expect minutes to be posted within so many days of the meeting and the video to be available within so many days of the meeting. And we're going to establish some guidelines around that. But we are in transition, and you're on the, you're on the telecommunications committee, right? So you know we're still looking for a replacement for Shannon, and I think she's so consumed by her other job that she has not admittedly been keeping up with the duties of posting minutes and videos to the website, so it's a, it's a...
They have them in law, though, right?
No, 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 I think, yeah.
They're still at the cinemas. They'll wait for it and hold on video.
They're, they're trying to get the glare off my head from the, on the videos. Post-production work, right? Yeah, so, that's why it's taking so long, it's a big job. Okay. So, but I think, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to get a definitive answer for you on, you know, when we can expect that to get better. Because I can't imagine it's that hard to post them, you know?
The meetings, I have absolutely...
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying you should do it. I mean, it didn't seem like it would be that tough for, to somebody to learn how to do it and, and get it done, so...
For an IT guy to do it.
Do you know, has the committee interviewed the candidate yet for that?
Uh, no, actually, I, I put the, I had only gotten one candidate.
Right.
And, and I was looking for more, and so I went on indeed.com and I posted the job on indeed.com, and I've gotten a lot more interest. In fact, I've gotten three or four resumes that are looking promising.
Okay.
And Jeffrey Layton and I are going to set up interviews for, I think it's next week.
Okay, great, all right. Okay, any other public comment from folks that just came in? No? Okay, move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion related to the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda is, is done.
You want to second that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Assessor's section, supplemental tree growth penalty. Do you want to bring it?
So you have to move to go into Assessor's section?
Oh, we do, okay.
Pursuant to...
I don't have the pursuant to part, but I will move us into Assessor's section pursuant to the statute that somebody will look up and cite later, so...
Do you want to do that later?
It's not an executive session, though, right? I mean, it's just an Assessor's session.
No, it's not executive, it's an Assessor's section, and because you are acting as assessors as opposed to Selectmen, that's why you have to go into a separate session.
Okay.
But, um, so you move and we need a second, and then you guys need to vote.
Is there a second to that?
Okay, second.
All in favor? Okay, we are in Assessor's session. So Ruth, will you kind of recap what we're doing here?
So there's, the first one...
It's about right.
Yeah, it's about right, that's right.
The first one is actually a supplemental, so it's an addition to taxes. It's a tree growth penalty. People who are at MAP 14 Lot 6 are taking some of their land out of tree growth, and when you do that, you have to pay a penalty. So that's what that one's for.
Okay.
So you got to do motions on each of them individually.
All right.
So there's a penalty of...
So I move, I move that we assess the tree growth penalty to, do I need to read this?
Uh, in the amount of $152.32 to MAP 14 Lot 6.
In the amount of $152.32 for MAP, where is this buried on here?
14 Lot 6.
MAP 14 Lot 6. I don't even see that in this letter.
It's on the front page. Should be in letters, shouldn't it? It's on the bottom of it, MAP, MAP 14.
Oh, there it is, yep. All right, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Who was the first?
Calvin.
Yeah? All right, all in favor? Opposed? Okay.
So the second one is an abatement that's taking away taxes. There is a property on MAP 1 Lot 69 that was assessed as 10.3 acres, which actually is five acres. And so Donna has done the math, and so they will get an abatement of $130.07.
Is that for a single year?
Yes, that's for this year.
So, okay.
That's a good question. You should, they can go back for years.
We're good on this one, right?
Yeah, but you're good on that one.
And the abatement's still up in the air, right?
Yeah, they haven't actu, you guys haven't actually...
Okay, I would move that we grant the abatement in the amount of $130.07 for MAP 1 Lot 69. Second. Any discussion? Who's in favor? You're unanimous, okay? Now I will... Both of you, okay? Okay, I will move us out of Assessor's session. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, we are out of Assessor's session. Say that 10 times fast. Okay, action and discussion items. We are at, first one is budget presentation. We've invited members of the Budget Committee to join us tonight, and Ruth's gonna, she sent out the half-year budget of last week or 10 days ago, and she's going to do a quick kind of overview and then welcome any, any questions or clarification requests from the, from the Budget Committee.
It, it's a very quick overview, and I'm really only touching on, on things that I thought there might be a question on. Looking at the budget, we're pretty much on target for most of our items. I know most about the administration budget, so I did some figuring on that. Our elections are over budget. I'm thinking that the final figure on the, the elections budget may be over as much as 1,500, but we will make up for it somewhere else. And then the expenses that correspond to the CEO obviously are really under. We did just hire a CEO, so you will see that going up this, these coming six months. The administrative capital budget, we have not spent any of this budget yet. I had been waiting for a new codes enforcement officer to start so I could discuss with them what they wanted, since we were making a new office for them. And so I have a meeting with an architect on August 22nd to talk about what is feasible in our thing, and then we're going to have to, I have to put out a bid for the roof. There's been some question over the years about grants. So there are two accounts that are associated with grants. There's revenues and an expense. And the reason why you do that is in governmental accounting, you're measuring the inflows and the outflows as opposed to necessarily revenues and expenses. They call them revenues and expenses, but it shows the outflow or the inflow of the sources. So you'll see on 12/31/2016, we had a balance of about a little over $12,000. And then so far this year, we raised at town meeting 10,000 to put into that budget. And then we've had payments already from grant sources of 3,000, and we've paid out for grant projects 3,600, a little over 3,600. So at the end of this year, 2,600, thank you. So at the end of this year, providing nothing else changes, we would have a balance in that account for about $22,800. So that is kind of meant to explain a little bit more about why the, the grant accounts are done the way that they're done.
Is that the account that we'd be using when we get a grant from the federal for, for the culvert set, or is that different?
Uh, that's different. This is, this is for the smaller grants generally that Chief puts in for, for his, his emergencies, his radios and things like that, that he puts in grants for.
You carry a balance in that because sometimes there's a match.
Uh, yes, exactly. And every so often, when the balance goes down so low, we raise it at town meeting, and that's what we did last year, we raised 10,000 at town meeting, or this year, sorry. Go ahead.
It's not unusual for us to have to, some of the grants that the fire department gets, for us to have to pay upfront and then it's reimbursed.
You'll notice that there's a separate section for Fire Department Additional EMS, which is account number 42, and we made this session, section specifically to track the $60,000 that was voted on at town meeting to specifically go towards the per diem staffing at the fire station. So that's where that account comes from.
Hasn't been much spending on that to date, but 9% of the budget's been spent, or is that mostly timing because we didn't really prove it until...
Twofold. It was actually not approved till April, so we're getting back on the process till April. That's actually why we do it all over all month, because it was going to be based on it all eight months. But then by the time it's actually still not fully implemented, we're still working on getting per diem staffing and doing my report to slip that during the weekend per diem staffing.
War Memorial Park, when I put the budget in, I switched the numbers for electricity and flags upkeep. So if you look at your version of the budget, it's, it's kind of messed up and it's very confusing. So what I did here is I took it for the end of July after I had fixed my error. And so you'll see that as of the end of July, we're probably going to be a little bit over on our electricity, not much, because it's about $15 a month, but a couple of the months went a touch over. And then we had 5410 for flags and upkeep, and that's for the flags at the War Memorial Park. And the rest of the money was twofold, actually, to help with the Eagle Scout project of the path and also to help with the renovations that needed to be done for the rotting posts on the, on the gazebo. And so most of those projects, well, the gazebo's finished and paid for, and I think that the Eagle Scout project is pretty much done. I think they just have some loam and some grass seed to put up there. And we still have $400 in that account, so we're doing pretty good. Our next task is to get it painted, the gazebo painted. So if anybody wants to paint the gazebo, let me know. Road Commissioner expenses is an issue, obviously, this year. When Powell decided to pull out of our Road Commissioner, shared Road Commissioner agreement, we had to take over the total expense for the Road Commissioner for the second half of the year. So, and, and I can make you copies of this, I guess I didn't think of it, but this shows the expenses through June 30th, 2017, and those are our actual expenses. And then the expenses through December 31st, 2017, that's an estimated expenses with just us, that doesn't include Powell paying anything. So the, the total salary for this year, we're going to pay for Road Commissioner is 47,000, a little over 47,000, whereas we've only budgeted about 35,500. So it gives a difference of almost $12,000, plus the other expenses, which you have to take into account, FICA, Medicare insurance, workers' comp, and Calvin's telephone. So that gives us a shortage of about $16,000. So when we had done the budget this year, the thought was that we would hire another Public Works individual full-time. So instead of doing that, the Board's decided that Calvin is going to basically be a, a working foreman. And you guys can correct me if I'm, you know, off-base on this.
R. S. B.
And so looking at the, the actual January through July expenses for 2017, those are our labor expenses, $126,893.51. And then estimating by taking the expenses from 2016, August through December, $76,661. Our, our biggest payroll months tend to be January, February, March, so our biggest payroll months are over. December will probably be a big payroll month, but if we're lucky, it won't be till December. So we had budgeted this year for labor $241,416. And the total estimated with the 2017 actual figures and the 2016, actual figures estimated forward to 2017, there's $203,554 that's going to be spent on labor, which gives us a cushion of $37,861, which will more than cover the $16,000 that were short for the Road Commissioner. So that should work out for this year.
I noticed the cost numbers are running high, or like 80% on both, actually, Public Works and Fire. Is that just a timing issue or...
It's just a timing issue, because we pay it four times a year. And so as we pay it, we, we associate it with certain accounts. And so you'll see that the other accounts will pick up as, as the end of the year comes and we pay the last payment. And then if, if they're off at the end of the year, I adjust them as well. Make sure that everybody's got what they're supposed to get. And that's all I have. If Chief has any comments, or Calvin has any comments, or you guys have questions, this is it.
Now Ruth, did you touch on the traffic control for the flagging? I was just curious into that, that that was, that was a big number that hadn't been used at all.
Calvin? Traffic control.
We have just been doing a lot of that, sort of over in the backcountry where they need it, so it was a budget number, but probably started using it moving forward once we get to quick. We've been starting to use it now a lot of the action.
Yeah, because I think the, I think the thought process of putting that in the budget was so that when it came to the ditching, you could use your guys more efficiently and run multiple trucks for, you know, and not tie up our guys' flagging, and we would be worth paying for that, so that we could get, the ditching would go faster, because you wouldn't be waiting for the truck to come back, you know, a half hour every time.
And we've been doing that, and now we're having trouble getting flaggers, so we've had a couple of days, this week we've had our own flagging, a day or two last week we had to do our own flagging, but for the most part, we've been having flaggers, but we're still having trouble today. They didn't get me tomorrow, I won't have any.
But none of the, but, so you've, you've been using flaggers, but we're not showing any expense on that line yet?
Because we haven't paid the bills.
Okay.
Just admitted to them.
Oh, I got you, okay.
And you're using like northeast traffic control or something like that? Quality traffic control and boost, you know? So you can't get them, just... I rented a machine yesterday to remove a ledge on Runaround Pond Road, and they said that was the last machine in the yard. They had no other equipment left in there. So I said, "When does that happen?" And I said, "Years." So that shows you how busy construction is.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I have something. It was actually part of my report. You guys don't, you guys haven't seen it yet, but it, uh, I actually do these. I alternate between having the, I guess, I might as well point at the Budget Committee, well, they're sitting here as well, or the ones that are present. I alternate between water testing and septic pumping every other year.
Is this about the well?
Yes.
Let's hold off on this until you report and let, and, yep, and let the, let the, I want to let the Budget Committee... I don't know if it's a Budget Committee matter.
Well, originally I...
I have some questions.
Yeah, I want to, where we are on the agenda, I want to, let me sure the Budget Committee gets a chance to ask their budget questions, and then we can hold this for your report.
Because we're not, we're going to not, we're not going to need the Budget Committee.
Good.
After all.
All right?
I, I found you my phone.
So shoebox, right Ruth?
Calvin, a couple of questions. We haven't spent anything on the rental equipment. Do we anticipate doing so, or...
Yeah, I think that bill was submitted today, too. Some of those submitted.
So that's showing zero, just because no bills were submitted?
Right.
And then it, it shows... And then it shows, you know, very little money spent for culverts and two I-nines, four-five-zero-two and four-five-ten, culvert drains and paving. Again, is that the same thing?
Yeah, paving bills you should have today, I think. That'll be spent in two weeks.
This is, before, this is, the header says through March thirty-first, but this is through?
Through June thirtieth.
Through June thirtieth, okay.
I think I fixed it on the ones that are here.
Under our donations, we have, half of them have paid and half, two of them paid and four of them are not paid. Are we waiting for bills from them or are we just lax in paying them?
No, generally we wait until they send us a request for the payment and then we send it to them. So usually about November or so, I start to contact them if they haven't billed us yet.
So when, do they get any sort of notice when it gets approved at town meeting? Because we have, these organizations all make requests and then some get approved, some don't. So how do they know to even send the letter asking for the funds if we don't notify them that?
Well, some of them call, but we don't, we don't notify them.
Should be paying attention.
Yeah, yeah.
We think so.
So.
It's kind of odd, I mean, they need the money, why would they delay their, why would they get their invoices right out?
They send an actual invoice for a donation?
Yeah, they ask for the funds.
Okay.
It just triggers me to do it.
But you'll prompt them if you don't hear from them by a certain time?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, if we voted to give them the money, we should give them the money. They should have to come looking for it, I don't think. They already came looking for it, that's how it got on the.
Well, we didn't have much. We didn't have much to spend.
Yeah, we were kind of safe in the cash.
Yeah, until, no, that's a good point, until we actually, we approved it in April, we didn't collect any tax revenue until just, you know, a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, I see your point. Yeah.
Maybe not that five hundred dollars is going to kill us.
If you want to talk about going to a fiscal year, then, you know.
Under the Public Works Capital Fund, five-nine-three-nine-nine-four, so we've only spent four and a half percent of that budget. What's the status of the road?
So that is a municipal bond from the bond bank. And the way that they structure it is that you pay half of the interest in the spring and then in the fall, you pay the other half of the interest plus the principal payment that you have to pay. So the most of the payment is done in the fall.
And those are all, those are all my questions. I was shocked to see that electricity bill.
Yeah, I was a little surprised too. Well, every once in a while, you know, my dyslexia kicks in.
Just make sure they're paying attention.
Yeah, there you go.
Dispatch is running a little bit high. Is that, have there been changes in, I know it's like always a conversation about dispatch.
Yeah, there's just, we've made no changes to dispatch, we departed because of how their budget cycle and how budget cycle works and none of us notified of, as of price increases, so it's.
So it was a price increase?
Yeah, in both cases, it was, they weren't astronomical price increases collectively, they paid for it.
I think too that we pay most of it in the first, or not most of it, but a lot of it.
The sheriff department is a, from memory, is a lump sum, a single invoice, whereas Lippman is a quadruple invoice.
And so we've paid the county, but we have probably another quarter or two left of the.
Any increase in theirs would have been subdivided up by quarters. In both cases, both of them.
Any other questions from budget committee members? Okay, Ruth, is that it? Does that cover your budget presentation?
That covers my budget presentation.
Okay, very good. All right, next we have a letter about LUCA, L-U-C-A, participation.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't, I don't know where to go with this, to be honest. So the two thousand twenty census is coming up and the census people are asking us to do something called LUCA, which is the local update of census addresses. And what they're asking for us to do is compile information for them and send it to them regarding our town. The advantage, there's a couple advantages. One of the advantages of doing that is the census comes out to be more accurate because we obviously have the best information concerning our own town. And we know where the houses have been going up and we know, you know, where to send these people to go and do the census count. The downside is it takes some time for the office to do this. I think that our new code officer would be capable of doing this once he gets up and running full-time. So if the selectmen wanted to do this, we could.
Do we know, so it's a voluntary program?
It's a voluntary program.
If we don't do it, where do they get the addresses from? Where do they typically get the addresses?
Well, typically, I would think that they're going to come spend, you know, sit down in our office and go through everything. So I guess probably either way, eventually, we're going to be spending time helping them.
The way I, yeah, well, the way I read this, they were, this was largely about putting it into a digital database.
Yeah.
Right, and that, that feels like it would be a significant amount of work when I was looking at what they want for each household. We have about sixteen hundred households in the town, right?
Right, although our program, we have a trio as our program that does our assessing work. And so I can make reports that, you know, tell you whether it's one person or a two-person house, unit house. They can tell you the address, they can tell you the owner, I mean, you could, anything that's in our files, I can make a report that includes that.
I just, I get, I question the, like, the real benefit because even if, even if the accuracy increased ten percentage points on a population of about thirty-five-hundred people, I just don't know if it's going to move the needle one way or the other in terms of, you know, any grant proposals or, you know, I just don't know if there's a significant downside to not doing it. Maybe we don't understand it well enough, but, I don't know. You guys have any thoughts on?
I'm not worried about the downside. Well, I mean, yeah, the downside, but it's the time that it's going to take, I mean.
Yeah, that's, is it worth it?
Are they willing to spend any money to the town for this?
They want you to do their job essentially.
They want us to do a federal job. Hey, and no federal money.
That's the way it works.
I can guess who.
The way it reads at least.
It is voluntary and.
Voluntary.
And I think, you know, I, it's, I'm not sure this is the type of thing I would want our new code enforcement officer to be investing a lot of time in when there's so many other more pertinent projects we could, you know, have them working on.
When are they looking at getting this done?
There's a timeline in there. It's a, basically, it's a, it's a, there's a, there was, there it is. So we're, obviously July's twenty-seventeen, training workshops, February through April. I guess that's probably when the bulk of the work would be being done probably by the office staff here. And then February through September, the Census Bureau is processing those. I think probably updating their databases or whatever, yeah.
The Census Bureau always asks for volunteers. I mean, I remember I was joking about saying that's a great way to lose your life, going from house to house. But why can't we just ask the town if there's any volunteers? Is that a hardship to have volunteers come into the office and do this? Because then they can feel like they're participating in helping with the census without having to go to strangers' homes.
I'm trying to decide whether there's any confidential information that we would have issues with. There, you do, you do have, it is confidential.
Have you had any actual, did this just come like in the mail or via email or?
This was in the mail.
I wondered, is there, I wondered, is there someone at MMA maybe we talked to, it's like, hey, you know, what's the deal with this? Is this, is this worth our time or, you know, what's the MMA's position on this? And maybe they can, maybe they can lay out pros and cons a little bit better than we can, just kind of.
It's probably a good idea.
There was an email that was going around on my listserv and they were polling different towns. And some were doing it and some weren't. But I am going to, I'm going to a convention this week, so I can sit down with some of the people and ask them.
Just as a follow-up, you know, maybe get a little more information on the pros and cons if we don't, you know, of doing it.
Okay.
So next on the agenda is marijuana ordinances and public hearing. And this is on the agenda because we're starting to get some inquiries about commercial marijuana-type operations. I think Calvin, you mentioned you'd had a couple of people ask, you know, from, one of them, what was one you said was a, they wanted, they were asking about a structure to grow up to how many plants?
I want the permit to build two twenty-five foot wide by one hundred and fifty foot long.
For growing marijuana, right. So there's, there's, we're getting questions and we don't, it's obviously something that I think we want as a town to have some, be proactive about in terms of what we want to happen or not happen with regard to that. So I think at some point, we, the board has talked about maybe having some sort of a public hearing with the town and just about the issue and getting feedback from the town or maybe doing a survey or something. The municipal association has, they have sort of a template moratorium ordinance that a lot of towns are adopting to kind of give themselves a chance to, you know, catch their breath and see how the state law is really going to shake out and what would be permitted or not permitted under state law. So we were just, the purpose of it on the agenda tonight was just to kind of start the discussion on, you know, what steps might we want to take to address this issue in Durham? One thought I had is, you know, to pass an ordinance, a moratorium would require a special town meeting and I'm not necessarily proposing that we do that at this point. But I do think it would be a good idea to kind of have in our back pocket a moratorium ordinance, you know, ready to go, if you would, so that if, if things were progressing along a lot faster than people were comfortable with and we kind of needed to put the brakes on something, we could on fairly short notice, call a special town meeting if we had to and vote on an ordinance. So I discussed with Ruth, I said, I think the board should consider asking the planning board, using that MMA template, to draft a marijuana moratorium ordinance and then send it through our town lawyer for, you know, for vetting. And then maybe we bring it to the town, maybe we don't, but at least we have it and it's ready to roll and we don't, you know.
I hate to be reactive.
Right.
If we're going to do it, I think it ought to be out there. Instead of being reactive and people saying, wow, jeez, now you're going to do something. Now that we've already got, is it going to be a problem? I don't know.
Calvin, if, if somebody comes to pull this permit today for two twenty-five by one hundred and fifty permits, what is that? Can you just wrap my head around, what is that, is that an agricultural pro, at this, I mean, what is that? Is that a strictly commercial project? What is that?
I had the discussion in the end with the planning board, just to see what their input was. I said, in my opinion, it's a commercial use.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
Quit calling it agricultural and I let them, and they agreed it's probably a commercial use, which is thrown into a conditional use permit. So hanging hand on that for now until we get challenged in court. So I just thought, what's the difference between growing this or growing tomato? It's like, there's a lot of, a lot of gray there.
Yeah.
It's legal, I don't know.
So a building of that size, what, I mean, they would have to get a conditional use permit?
Not for building.
Not for the building, just for the use?
Both are made, I could issue.
You could issue a building permit for that?
If the use is considered commercial, then that would hold up to the application. So I guess, but all we've got at this point, we could really go with.
Do we need to have a special town meeting? Can't we just put that moratorium vote on the November ballot?
No, it would have to be a town meeting, I don't, I don't, actually, I wonder if it could be a referendum? That's a good question.
I wonder if it, for a referendum, it might have to be initiated with the petition process. That'd be a good question for the, that's a good, that's a good question.
Because that's right around the corner.
Local referendum, you think, you think we'd be able to initiate a local referendum?
You'd think so. I will, I'll look into that.
But in the meantime, so, but whether it was a November election or a special town meeting or whatever, the first step is to actually draft the ordinance, right?
Right.
Yeah, it's pretty easy since it's already been done.
Yeah, there's a, there's a pretty good template there and so I don't know, I don't know if there's an official process for like formally asking the planning board to draft the ordinance or if the board, I think it should kind of, I think it should at least go through the planning board.
Can I ask a question though? It's not necessarily a zoning issue. A moratorium is really an ordinance, just like many of your other ordinance, that aren't necessarily a planning and zoning. So at times the planning board, we work as a ordinance rewrite, but we're focused purely on the zoning ordinance. I just, I'm not a hundred percent certain it fits in our group.
I think that's a fair question. I guess, you know, as a fairly inexperienced board here, not even fairly, very inexperienced board here, I think we've kind of, the soundbite has been that ordinances come through the planning board. But maybe it's not all ordinances, again, if it's not a.
Well, you know, it's not a big issue for me to take the MMA template and make it, you know, Durham template and send it through the lawyer and bring it back to you guys so that we could either have a referendum or a special town meeting. The moratorium would last for a hundred and eighty days and during that time, that's when I think that the planning board would take control of what exactly the ordinances are going to say in regard to what we're going to allow in town, which zones we're going to allow in town, setbacks, odor ordinances, things like that, because it's a lot of issues that are going to come up in the town as people want to have these permits. The state is looking at sending out licenses, I think it's February two thousand eighteen is the first date that they're going to be available. They may have pushed it back, I don't know, but, so that would give the planning board time to do that.
And I certainly don't, I'm sorry, from a planning board perspective, it probably isn't any time too soon for us to start to consider what a zoning ordinance might include for marijuana and probably participate in any public hearing the board does about the ordinance. So we start to hear the community concerns.
Yeah.
So certainly no time too soon for us to start on the zoning portion of having those types of businesses in the town.
So two, I'm hearing two kind of follow-ups for you. One is to, as you just said, use the template and have a draft ordinance, send it through the lawyer.
Lawyer probably ought to give you a good idea if we can take it to referendum, right?
And that's number two, right?
Yeah, I'm sure I can ask Jack if you can.
That's the second one, like, can, could we put it on a local ballot in, in November? Or do we have to actually have a town meeting?
Right. And then, you know, as far as the public hearing, I was kind of thinking maybe the middle of September would be good. You know, after school starts and people get calmed down a little bit and everybody's back from summer vacations.
I definitely think we ought to have an hearing.
Good place to start.
If not just one.
Yeah, and in fact, it might be good, especially if, this could work out real well. If we found out that we could do it in November and we had a draft ordinance to put out there, then we could have a public hearing specifically about what people think about, it gives people something to react to rather than just have a public hearing, so come tell us what you think about. So come tell us what you think about marijuana, you know? We're gonna get all kinds of different answers on that.
About fifty-fifty, I bet.
Yeah, that's right. I'm not even sure it's fifty-fifty, but, um, yeah. So does that sound?
Yeah.
Like good next steps? Everyone concur on that?
So I'm curious, we, right now, there's nothing on the books, so did you have to approve it?
I left it for the next one.
Nice.
No, it's commercial.
Calvin, if you, if you did, just, I, I still can't remember, if you did, as long as they met the setbacks, they can obviously build the buildings, but once they say, can they actually produce anything in there without some type of permit from the town?
No, there's no permit from the town.
So you can't stop them from building a building, I get that. But what goes on inside of that building, for example? There has to, what, what can we do from that perspective?
Pretty much everything but residential in the town of Durham is a conditional use.
So it would have to go before the planning?
So it would have to go before. So it would go before the planning board as well?
But, but without any, any ordinances, then unless there's something that's egregious, wouldn't they, wouldn't you as a planning board have to?
We're gonna have to look at all of our various categories and determine where it fits and then what the requirements are for the conditional use. But the conditional use, I mean, a lot of the concerns people might have, um, buffers, landscape buffers, odors.
Odor buffers.
You know, those things are all, all things that are tried to control in our ordinance because it's trying to anticipate any industry, any, any business that might come into, um, a residential area or positive disruption and how do you minimize the disruption to, you know, the neighbor, neighborhood property. So, I mean, I think we have provisions and it certainly would be, um, you know, it'd be learning curve for all of us to, to go through the process.
Do you think you could just bring up the fact that it's against federal law?
Well, that's what I wonder about, it's like, fine, it's legal state law, but it's still illegal federal law. There's still a lot of, so that's why I think, I think the, giving a moratorium at least in process and then we can, the town may or may not approve it, but at least we have it ready to, to go. So, okay. All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, the resignation of our animal control officer.
Unfortunately, our animal control officer's full-time job is taking precedence over his animal control officer job. And so I need a motion from the board to go out and advertise and try and get a new animal control officer.
He was busy.
He was very busy. Oh, I meant to give you guys, I'll send you guys a report. He, he gave us a report for June, did I send it to you?
You did, yeah.
He's wicked busy.
Yeah, he was very busy. He said that Durham is a very busy town.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one.
Cows and horses.
One that makes it a little too busy.
It seems like there's a habitual offender on a, I don't know, maybe Calvin can make sure their property's up to par for housing their animals. I actually, yeah, whatever. No, it's actually over your house, but thank you.
They'll show up on your lawn.
We have had a dog, is, the, yeah, the, the wandering dog has been to our house a couple times.
Really?
I don't know what the situation is, but there are animal welfare laws that need to be followed.
Yeah, I agree.
So if there's repeat offenders, you can easily just touch base with animal welfare and have them come in and inspect.
Jill, do you wanna be an animal control officer?
No, because my full-time job made me a half hour late for this meeting, so.
She's a, a different type of animal control officer. So it, so have we, we, years ago, actually not that long ago, we shared with Lisbon.
Right.
Right, is that an option that you think might be open to us?
We have not burned any bridges, so if we wanted to go back and ask Lisbon if that would be a possibility, we could certainly do that.
They picked up other towns, cause I saw the truck the other day and there was three towns listed on the truck. I know there was Sabados, Lisbon, and I wanna say maybe Leeds is one other.
Who's Pownell?
At Durham, that's happened.
Um, ACO is our ACO.
Is he resigning from them too, or is he just?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
He was only with us two or three months.
Uh, yeah, it hasn't been very long, maybe March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was after we joined the board, so it was in April, so.
He, he was really good, I'm sad to see him back.
No, it's too bad, but I think, I know if I, if I recall the history correctly, we went away from Lisbon to save a few bucks, but we're kind of paying the price for that now because what are we on, our fourth? This would be the fourth?
No, this is only the second.
No, we, the new one, this would be at least the third, cause it was the one we had before John and this next, next one would be at least three, but I thought.
This next one would be third?
I thought there was, I thought there was two before John, but regardless, we're, it's a pretty high rate of turnover.
Yeah.
So.
What's been the reason from the others?
Well. Yeah, yes, to watch the videos. The first gentleman, um, left because of some sort of a disagreement. And then, um, John's just leaving because he, he just can't do it.
Well, part of me says there's gotta be more to the story if he's willing to keep Pownell, but he's dropping us.
Um, I, I think that we're really busy. I think Pownell's probably not as busy.
We're twice the size of Pownell.
Yeah.
Right, so, and he, he'd been doing Pownell for quite a while.
Yeah.
And recently added this town and it's.
And he lives in Pownell.
It's not like his job is to the point where something has to give and it's, I don't think it has anything specifically to do with.
No.
Durham, other than perhaps the volume of calls.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything to do with that. I think he really is just, you know, his full-time position changed and he, he just doesn't have the time anymore.
Okay, so I would, uh, I would move that we have Ruth advertise for new, uh, animal control officer and also check with Lisbon and perhaps other towns that she may think of that might be interested in a sharing arrangement. Discussion, in favor?
Freeport use?
Yeah, I don't know. Does Freeport have a police department?
Yes.
Usually the police department, yeah.
Okay, uh, conservation commission.
I, I wrote that wrong, it should be committee.
Committee. Okay.
So I presented you guys with, um.
Purpose statement?
A list of duties of conservation committee to try and get, um, we do have a conservation committee now. We have one member, but, um, with all that's going on with our parks, I think that the town could really benefit from an active conservation committee.
Did you guys have any thoughts after reading through this?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I just got it today, um, this morning. It's, it's a brief one. I don't have any thoughts, I mean, I, it, it can't hurt, we just wonder how many resources we need towards.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I've, I've thought about this one quite a bit. I'm, I'm not sure now is the right time to invest a lot of resources in trying to rejuvenate this committee and I'm certainly open to be convinced otherwise. Because I think a lot of the things that we might have this committee do would be a result of direction that comes out of the comprehensive planning process. And some of the things, I just don't know if I agree with, like, the committee shall be responsible for the upkeep of public open space in Durham to include Durham River Park and Runaround Pond Park. I mean, does that mean we expect them to like mow the grass and do?
Oh, no, no, trailheads is what I, all right, so, so I'll give you the background. This comes up, uh, for two different things. One is, is, uh, the River Park has, uh, the River Park was a joint effort between the conservation committee and the Andersgagen Land Trust. So, um, because we received funds, they go and they, they check it out every year. The trails, um, on River Park are sadly in, in disrepair and really need to, um, be redone. And, you know, we, I don't know who we're gonna task to, to blaze the trail and paint the markers and put the, the bridges and stuff. And then now we're also getting into Runaround Pond Park where, uh, the Royal River, um, the Land Trust has acquired all this land around Runaround Pond and, and is working with the town to try and, and make it, um, more trail friendly also. And they blazed a bunch of trails, or actually not blazed new trails necessarily, but went in and fixed the old trails, um, and also did a huge cleanup. And one of the issues with the cleanup is that there, uh, was a lot of, um, trash in the park, drug paraphernalia and, um, other assorted things that they, they found and cleaned up. And one of their suggestions was that, um, you know, if we had, uh, a committee or a group of people that was willing to help with the upkeep of these parks, we would be in, in better shape. And, you know, who, who is responsible for the upkeep of these parks? The River Park is owned by Durham, Runaround Pond, we are stewards of the Runaround Pond Park because we leased that from the state. So, and we just put the Portopond or the.
Well, we're talking about stuff like, you know, picking up trash and things like that, why wouldn't that be Public Works?
Well, we do have a Public Works person who does go and pick up the trash at Runaround Pond once a week. But he doesn't do any of the trailheads, we do mow the parks, um, through Public Works.
It's just the.
It's just the actual upkeep of the trails and the.
We don't have a D R brush gotta do it.
No, no, I'm just raising a question of, I think, you know, we would have to clarify, you know, cause the way the first duty reads, says, shall be responsible for the upkeep of public open space in Durham.
I was trying to make it wide. I was trying to leave it broad.
Yeah, those would be private, those would be private, right, those are taxed.
What about having somebody in charge of getting volunteers? In the sense that, until you mentioned the drug paraphernalia, my thought was you have Boy Scouts, you used to have Ki Club, Kiette Club at the high schools. Some high schools require so many hours of community service in order to graduate. Why can't this be part of that?
That's a more thought, you know, rather than, you know, at least maybe in the short term, maybe we put out, we have a project and this is what's involved in the project and it would be great, this would be great for Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or some other group and this is what would be involved and see if anybody would step up and take the project.
Andersgagen inmates.
I thought the conservation commission, is Andersgagen Land Trust helping with the trails?
No, they don't upkeep the trails.
No.
I have a meeting with them, um, I think next week, so I will, I will talk to them about maybe a joint effort. To my knowledge, no.
So, um, I think, I, I think this is worth more discussion, but I think as it's currently worded, it's, it's, uh, it feels like a more like responsible, powerful oversight organization that's well beyond just, you know, we're, we'd like to have some engaged citizens and volunteers to help take care of the trails and, and stuff in the parks, so.
I think we'd be able to get volunteers to do it. Somebody with a D R cutter would do, uh, quick job of trails.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes I wonder if people might be more willing to come forward and volunteer for a project versus a, you know, a three-year commitment to a, to a committee. You know, I, I, I bet we, we might be surprised at who might come forward and say, yeah, I'll take a Saturday afternoon and, you know, and go do that, you know, but, um. Any other thoughts? So my thought is though, I, I don't, I don't, personally, I don't think we should move forward at this time with actually trying to officially form a committee. I mean, we could talk about it more when Mark and Rob are back too.
I'd say we table it for another month.
If we want to table it for next meeting?
I would table it for, yeah, for a month, like, I'd table it for a couple of meetings.
Something simpler.
Yeah, and we could, you know, maybe we have a workshop on it and talk about it, like, what do we really wanna get out of it? And maybe we have, maybe we need to, uh, as a board, um, either together or individually, you know, kind of go take a look at what needs to be done and what, like, what, get some visuals on what we're trying to get accomplished and then, and then figure out how to approach it.
Okay, we put the rocks across the, yeah? Rocks.
At the Runaround Pond parking, parking lot, to keep people, car, remember we, we decided to do that at one of the meetings based upon recommendation from the Royal River Conservation. Okay. By whom? Well, the selectmen voted for you to do it, so I think you're safe.
It's safe unless you don't do it.
All right. So next we have a request for a letter of no action.
But Jeff's not here. Oh, Jeff, you are here.
I'm here.
Okay.
Yes, please, sue.
How you doing?
Good.
If I could just, uh, open this up. Issue a permit for Jeff to build a house in Onsted, Colorado back in February. Paul had issued it, the house, and got changed, so reissued a new permit with a new house. New fee, increased the fee and everything. There was an old house there, uh, tore that down, put a new house where the old was. Built the house and during construction, these people who were here from Florida bought the house and to be closer to their daughter, she's out there. Granddaughter, so, the house was tailored to their wants and needs and finished. Designed for one level, no basement, no stairs, there's no decks, porches, it's all designed for, I can't remember how to word this, but senior couple or.
Yeah.
Senior living.
So this house was, was tailored to their specific needs. It was finished, occupancy permit was issued. Prior to closing, the bank sent out a mortgage loan inspector to do a survey. They moved the back line over ten feet, as you'll see when you do a copy of the survey. He lost ten feet of survey and moved the back line over in. So one corner of the building is four feet too close to the setback line, so they can't close, so.
Calvin, the, the building that they built, it, it is on the exact envelope of the old building that was torn down?
It was the intent, but, I mean, nobody actually took a physical measurement, you know, as you know, once you tear things apart, nothing looks the same and it was trying to. So it wasn't site located, but it was the intent of pretty much replacing that building.
Sure, thank you.
So whether the old one was, the old one might even be close to the one I, so. Options are here to, uh, these people are ready to move in, they're now living in a camper in their daughter's backyard and so I still, well, we have the, still the house here. What we've had done in the past, in fact, did you get a copy of that old one?
I sent, no, yeah.
Yeah, I've seen this, I've seen it.
This, the town could do, call a letter of no action. Some banks will accept them, some won't, and so his title company, the title company for the bank has drafted a copy of one that I guess they're willing to accept, so. That's, that's history.
Yeah, I don't think we have that. Do we have a copy of that?
No, you don't have a copy of that.
I'm gonna give you everything.
Okay, thank you.
He just put me in a bucket of, and now I have to take over from there.
So you're, you're the builder, is that right?
I'll give you, let me hand this out to you so you'll understand hopefully what's happening. You can get the whole thing.
Oh, that's all, I'm sorry.
Jeff, I'll need one too.
Anybody else need one?
If you have an extra one.
Yeah, I'll give you one.
I'll get it.
So Jeff and I met with Nate, new governor officer, and the three of us met earlier than we, we all agreed that this would be approved, so he's on board with that and understands what we were discussing. Can, can I give you a brief?
Yeah, please, go right ahead.
Please, thanks.
I won't be, I'll be short, but basically, the history here is nineteen seventy-eight, my father bought this piece of property and if you look at the first page that I gave you, the, the copy sheet, twenty-nine is the lot and it's a very small lot, in fact, it's under an acre. Uh, and it was, it, uh, the prior building inspector determined it was a grand founded building lot and they followed through with it. And we knew it was tight and Todd probably remembers the structure that was there, it was just a little, it wasn't much.
It was a block, it was a blockhouse. It was a butcher shop.
There you go. Now, now the history's coming out.
Oh, the red cement house?
Correct.
Okay.
So in any event, I was a teenager at that time, but I watched my father walk around with the landowner and they walked the lines, they shook their hands and said, okay, this is where it is. That was it. My father passed in 2011. My mother's got this single family rental property that's, it's in, you know, it's going down. And we just determined the best thing to do was to take it down. And she figured, and I advised her, and maybe if we build a nice house there, it would be easier to move the property. So we pursued along those lines. Now, hopefully, you know, you won't think I'm a complete fool, but we, we built this whole thing, we pulled the measurements, we put the foundation, we're to the finish line with the mortgage company. And on August 1st, the bank comes out and they say, okay, you're 16 feet from the property line, you're lacking four feet for the setback. And my jaw dropped because I, I had completely no idea that that would happen. And if you look at the second page, you'll see the bank plot plan. And you, and if you compare that with the third page, which is a recent survey that I had done, actually just the other day. And if I could draw your attention to the highlighted notes, the surveyor found there was a deficiency of 10.10 feet along the northwesterly line, which is highlighted, which is the back line. The deed says it's 200 feet and his survey to the pin of the neighbor says 189 feet. So unfortunately, the way that works is the line's going in a direction that I don't want it to go because of the structure.
Yeah.
And I honestly, I tell you honestly, I have, we did this in February when we put the foundation in and I measured and I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I had it all right, but obviously, things are working against us. So I screwed up. And now I've got a family who's on the finish line to move in and I don't know what to do.
On, on this diagram, which lot number is it too close to?
Um, well, it's, it's actually, actually-
Too close to 26.
That's 12.
It's, it's-
No, 30.
30.
30.
30, 30 is the, and, and maybe this would help you too.
Oh, there it is, yeah. And does, does the owner of lot 30, do they have, do they have a problem with this?
Well, I wish I could tell you because of all, of all the options that I was given, you know, number one, the first one was contact the, the abutter. Well, the abutter, the title company tells me the abutter lives in Vermont, which we found out. All there is is a post office box. Then they traced it to who they believe was the daughter of the owner of the land. And I've been trying to call her for the last week and I'm, maybe even made myself obnoxious, but I, I'd left messages on the answering machine explaining the situation and it's crickets on the, I-
Is there a house or a structure on that lot?
Let me show you. This, this is a picture of the site.
Okay.
Todd, you know, you can pass it around.
Yeah.
Can I give a little bit of nosy neighbor information?
Sure.
Why not?
Why not?
A charm of small town government.
110 Stackpole Road, so maybe a quarter mile away from your guys' lot. Both the neighbors opposite lot 30 from you, the Wallaces, nope, same side of the road, the Wallaces, and the Woods who live 118. Have all tried to contact the owner of lot 30 for various reasons, either wanting to buy the property, wanting to use it for just pasture land, that sort of thing. And it has been crickets for at least five years.
Oh, so she doesn't hate me.
Nobody's been able to reach this person.
Now, this is the one with the driveway going through it, right?
Yeah, so there's a right of way, right next to my, right next to the boundary there.
Doesn't show that right of way.
No, it doesn't show it on the tax map, but you're right. There's a right of way that, that goes to Lance.
Goes to, yeah, Lances, yeah.
And you're, you're, you're off by four feet? Is that what, is that right?
Well, if you want to get to-
It's supposed to be 20.
3.8 feet.
Less than four feet.
Not even the whole, not just one corner.
Oh, right, just that back, just that back right corner, yeah.
You know, when they move that line in 10 feet, that's all over the-
Yeah, that's, that's the curious part to me. The line of the 10 feet, the one, the 189 90, that back north, easterly line, was there a deed originally that was wrong or a survey that was wrong that triggered this?
That's the million dollar question, but he, he says in his notes, if you look at his notes, he says-
Well, it's hard to read, I'm getting-
Yeah, I'm there too, believe me. If you look at, I think I highlighted it for you.
You did, I see the deficiency of 10.10.
Deficiency of 10 feet and, um-
But is it a deficiency, that's what I'm getting, is it deficient, because it was assumed or was it deficient because it wasn't a deed that it was originally-
The deed said 200. The deed, if you look at the, if you look at the plot plan and you, you look at the 189 feet on the back there, can you see that?
Yep.
Then below that, it says deed, 200 feet.
That's where, that's where I'm getting confused. So the deed and the pin don't agree with each other? Is that essentially what we have?
The mortgage deed is recorded at the Anderson Skoggin Registry of Deeds, reads that that should be 200 feet there.
And the-
On paper.
The pin takes precedence over the deed?
Right, yeah.
Well, not, that's what I don't get, because typically the deed circum-
But, but in any event, this guy who did the survey, he's not, he's been around, he's good, he's among the guests.
But why does the pin take precedence?
Well, because certain monumentation takes precedence. But what, what, what he, what he says-
Or is it because you lost 10 feet in a right of way? All right, let's let him answer.
No, no, if you, if you read, if you read the rest of that highlighted area, he says the iron, the very last part of it, the iron pipes found at the new corners were used so as not to create a conflict. So in other words, the conflict is with the 200 feet, as the deed says, and his pin driven in 189 feet. So this, it's the way I read it, unless somebody else can tell me different.
Well, I, I read it as he's, that pin was there, that was a founding pin, right?
It's a surveyor's-
Right, it was a surveyor's pin. But it doesn't necessarily mean that pin's in the right point. And he also says he found it lying down. Right.
So what happens is-
Oh, really?
That's what it says right here.
It did not lie down. Oh, my god.
Somebody-
I'll explain to you. How, how, it works. Survey isn't a rule. They have a book of rules that they have to go by. And one of their rules is that monumentation takes precedence over distance. So if they come, I mean, I had a case in Scarborough where they hit on the line going in and back because they didn't go anywhere in their description. And so if the monument is there, that's what they go by. It takes precedence over the distance cited in the deed.
What does monument mean?
By marker.
It's granite.
Three, stone.
Even if, even if the monument is lying down? Calvin, is a monument and a pin the exact, because usually monuments sometimes are ri-
It's called monumentation.
So, well, so we're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve the survey issue here tonight. I think the- So what, what can we do as a-
May I further present before you-
Yeah, go.
Okay. I, I, I kind of brought this along with, here's the timeline. We recognized the problem from the bank, we talked with the title company, talked with the town of Durham, the codes officer, and said, here's our problem, what's the best way to solve it. And we went through the different options. And because of the time involved with these folks, I mean, and the fact that we can't get a hold of the, the abutters, I don't know how long it would take or if we could, or if, if they'd even be willing to grant the land to meet the side. The other option that was brought up from both the title company and the codes officer was a letter of no action. And I, I have a letter from the title company and, and an affirmation from the bank that says, we will accept this so these folks can get their mortgage and close on this property. And that would solve the whole problem.
Yeah, my last question, you typically, unfortunately, I used to be a builder and I've actually been in that seat that you're sitting in right now and gotten a bulkhead or two and some too close to setbacks per se, but it's typically the planning board sets that, whether or not they want to-
A letter of a no action would come from us.
The selectmen on this town will do it? Okay.
Well, for this situation.
This, this looks like a, I mean, usually if it's a-
If it was in a subdivision, it'd be a whole different thing.
That's, that's where I would, yeah, all right.
You could do a, a change of, a change of subdivision.
Okay, I gotcha. Thank you.
If you had that 10 feet, does it go into the right of way driveway?
Hmm.
See, we're, we're still all on his limb, we're just talking about the setback to the deed of, uh, to the side.
But, I mean-
Still on land, it's not in the driveway.
Okay, right.
So if you sit there for seven years, it's now your property. In the same name.
Yeah.
You put something there, it's now your property after seven years. So you can resolve it in seven years, she'll never show up.
Well, they're not doing anything with, they're not on their property and the driveway's not on their other-
Well, that's the, that's the interesting thing. There's their property. They don't seem to care about it from, based on what this neighbor has said. And they've already allowed a right of way over their property so they can service Lance and his family out back.
Right.
And so that right of way is, it's just a right of way that they've granted to the, the people in back, so.
I might say I don't think that, I'd put money on that house isn't any closer to the line than it was-
And you're, that's, that's kind of a house.
I'd, I've looked at that.
That's your neighborhood, I didn't think you would.
I've looked at that for many, many years and I don't think you, what you took down-
Did you, do you miss it?
No, not at all, not at all. No, I'll be glad to see you guys in the driveway.
A different point.
Yes. You get the block, you get to the blockhouse, slow down.
Yes.
I know you're gonna be topping the hill, slow down.
So that road, there's, that's kind of next to there, that, in that picture there, that tree?
Yes.
That's not a right of way of any sorts.
It is, it is a right.
It is a right of way.
Actually, yeah.
So is that 10 feet from that right of way, Jeff?
No.
Okay.
No, that-
Does it just seem to all line up?
Actually, that house is probably 25 feet from the side of the right of way.
Okay.
It's 16, that back corner is 16 feet from the, the established boundary line that the survey came up with. And that boundary line is still, if you walked, if you went over there and looked at it, the boundary line is still six or eight or 10 feet away from the edge of the right of way.
Okay. And, and your deed says 200 feet?
It does.
Yeah.
But that was in, that was on the handshake.
But the deed says 200 feet, right?
Deed says 200 feet.
Deed says 200 feet is all I'm going with. That's all I-
Right.
I know if a homeowner or layperson, you know, they can find one and they say it's 200 feet and then you come back because somebody inadvertently picked up a pin maybe because they got hit by a weed whacker and moves it over 10 feet.
Well, it's like you, it's like you read, he found these pins lying down and it's like, okay.
I don't even know if there's a-
Is it possible they could have been moved during the cleanup?
Sure.
Because lord, there was a lot of stuff that you had to clean out of there. It wouldn't surprise me.
Go way back on that back corner.
So can't we just put it in the appropriate spot and bring it again next month?
I, we're on TV, you know.
Just so you saw.
I guess we can now. Calvin, I don't know what we, I mean, what, what can we do?
But I mean, can't you find passerby's or have these-
This is the copy of the letter that he- This is from the bank?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Jeff, this, this is what the bank provided?
The title company and, and with the bank provided that. And they said, if this is signed, the selectmen, the no action letter, they will receive it and allow these folks to, to take the mortgage out so they can close the property. And there'll be no action against you as a body or they as the landowners and they will be, it'll, they tell, I'm not a lawyer, I'm just-
Well, I, philosophically, I would have no issue doing exactly your request. The one question I do have is, should this be reviewed by our lawyer before we sign it?
I suppose we, we could. We didn't do the last one.
Didn't, we didn't on the last one?
No, we didn't have the last one reviewed.
The one we didn't march or the, the previous board didn't march?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I will tell you this. Douglas Title has been around for 40 years and they've done all the title work on all the houses in the area here. I mean, they, that's what they do. And this is a kind of a form letter they use with the banks.
So we're not, we're not really changing it. We're just giving them permission to move closer.
Yes, I accept back.
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty cut and dry.
It's already a small lot anyways.
I make a motion that we accept it as the bank, is it the bank or title company? Sorry, Jeff, I don't want to mess that up.
Title company.
This is the title, that we accept the letter drafted by the title company and approve this letter of non-action.
I'll second it.
I think there's someone-
In favor? Okay.
Send a draft around.
Do we need all the copies signed or just one?
Well, you, you form a quorum, right, three?
We do, we do.
I just, I think I just need three, right?
Yeah.
And then I need a copy for her because she's, she's poking the pen at me to get it. Do we have an extra copy?
She's kind of mean, you know.
Jeff, look, he's done. Well, we've kind of separated the top from the-
Do you need this for your record?
I'm sorry, number one.
Do you want, you can keep whatever you think you need.
Probably a coffee.
You might want, yeah, you might want to keep this.
Oh, definitely keep a coffee.
Yeah, I would keep coffee, yeah.
Did you mention?
I did, to accept it as written and approve it as non-action.
I seconded it.
I got you, Todd.
Hey, Todd, do I have an extra form, letter that you want?
I don't sign these all, so would you go top one?
Yeah.
Top the other, what, second?
The signature page?
Um, not yet, we're getting.
Okay.
We'll get a signature page with writing on it.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome. I don't have the signature page yet, Paul, I won't be able to-
She doesn't need the signature page.
The signature one last, please.
Yeah, you, you don't, you don't need that.
I don't need that.
All right, let's see. Well, welcome to the neighborhood, folks.
Well, thanks so much for making this, this a difficult situation much easier.
Welcome to Durham. Welcome to Durham.
Sometimes common sense prevents.
You know, I was hoping for that.
All right, so that's the second signed one. I don't know if you need more than two.
Do you need three sets assigned?
Is there another top somewhere? Um, no, sir.
Jeff, do you want both of the signed copies?
Oh, I got it, I got it.
You want both of the signed copies?
Really only need one original.
Well, how many do you want?
Yeah, but do I, do I need, do I need an notary? Are you a notary?
I'm a notary.
On our website, watch us do it.
I'm a notary.
As much proof as you can.
Okay.
All right. So I guess he only needs the one.
Yeah, I, I-
Good.
I want to keep this copy.
Yeah, I'll keep the copy, the other one that you signed, yeah.
Okay, I'll give that one back around.
Send this back around and make sure she has that.
Yeah, that goes with it. Oh, I didn't sign this one.
You all good?
Welcome to the neighborhood.
We're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I live up around the corner, 250.
250.
The very high mark.
Lower on the right lawn and corner.
He's a builder too.
Oh, okay.
Cool, take a left.
Take a left.
Take a left, top of the hill, top of the hill. Yeah, just around the corner.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, uh, next on the agenda is, uh, CMP request for a pole permit.
I know nothing about this, I'll be right back.
How do you normally get pole permits when they do a subdivision?
Yeah, this is on Rangdale. Yeah, this is, this is, yeah. I, I, the only thing I can think of is if maybe a new house went in and they need a line extension.
This should, this should have a.
Yeah, it should be a blanketed.
I don't know. It's usually all done before.
So, who does know about this?
I'd say.
Is there somebody here from CMP or Calvin?
Pole permit, can you speak to it?
What's that about?
I don't know.
All right.
I just, I think, where is that one on, uh, is that the one down on Rangdale?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I inspected, called CMP and they brought you those power tools. I don't know why we need an easement, it's already there. Oh, they wanna put a new pole on the road, okay. Select them, just go approve it.
I need a little more than that.
Move that.
My intent is too close to something.
Yeah, right.
Apparently it's a CMP thing. Uh, it should have been in the development and easement already granted to CMP, but apparently, I don't believe that's in Shawland Zone.
Jeez, oh.
Calvin, is Rangdale a hundred percent, um, public road, it's not?
So.
I never know anymore.
There's two or three lots left at the end that are now, they're all in the contract, but the power starts back in the contract. They need to extend it down a little bit further to get to the last three houses.
Okay.
I am perplexed as to why. They should have an easement already granted in the subdivision planer, so I don't know why they need this easement, why they need this permit, but.
They figure they do.
If you guys are okay with, uh, you have, do you have a copy of the permit application?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they just need it to be signed, that means.
Okay, and CMP and fair point.
Is this it?
Yeah, this is it.
Okay.
The one that they put on the primary copy, I've already approved, but they need to now set one more pole to get to that.
They wanna go a little bit deeper, okay. Yep.
It's all staked over beside the road.
That's actually two poles.
Yeah, they ask for two poles, yeah.
Well, one or two poles. Nothing to do with us, it's in the regway.
Which is bizarre.
Anybody from, uh, Rangdale here?
We're not poles now, it's a little late.
For the easement, it's already granted.
Yeah.
Unless it wasn't for some reason, I don't. It could be just a formality, the day you apply the policy that they have.
Okay. Good on that one. All right, now it's time for the fire department report.
Did, did you guys vote on it?
We signed it.
You just signed it, okay.
Does that constitute, do you need a vote? I'll make a motion that we, um, accept the CMP easement for the Rangdale, Town of Rangdale, Rangdale subdivision.
I'll second it.
Favor?
Okay, cool. Plan a poll.
Okay, now it's time for the fire.
I stole milk and so I'll give it one's back.
Yep, Willie, we were starting to talk before about with the well that, every other year I have the water tested at the station and this year's test didn't come back very well good. It, uh, we had three or four things strikes against us, but nothing that's out of the ordinary, nothing that really exceptional except for, we failed the EPA primary test for E. coli bacteria. It, uh, after doing some research and stuff, I know it's only been with a water company. I don't see where we have a lot of options. It's a dug well behind the station. We can, uh, try to do purification on it, but we could just be throwing money into a well and stuff to have they still come back with the same test results. With that failure, the EPA test, I gave you, uh, some of the water testing information and stuff, just in case you weren't real familiar with it. It, uh, it, uh, it's not supposed to be for drinking purposes and all the water sinks at the station, we put up signs, not for drinking and not for cooking purposes and stuff. But I gotta be honest with you, after doing more research, I'm really not crazy about telling them when they go out on a call and they come back and need to sanitize their hands that they should go to the sink and wash their hands and stuff like that. But anyways, I need to do some more exploring, but I needed to bring it to your attention. The well with Dougwell, it's about seventy feet out behind the station. My game plan is going back in time and it had always been in the capital plant for another five to ten years out, wants to actually replace it with a drill well as the use of the building increased and intensified and, um, I really think, I need to do some re, more research, but I think it's something we need to act rapidly on. I, I, I don't think we should have people in there using the water.
The E. coli, is that high?
It, uh, I.
It just says.
If I'm a cat, I really have no idea.
So, um, what's involved in, cause I, I, I personally have a little experience. I have, I also have a dug well. I had a similar issue several years ago and we shocked it with bleach and ran it, you know, ran the water basically until it didn't smell like bleach anymore and that took care of it. For, and I haven't had a problem since, so it's not all, it's not.
E. coli or?
Yeah, both. It's not always.
Cause they know what you guys described. Will take care of the first one, but the E. coli, from meeting with the well people and the water people, what they told me is that you need to actually scrub the well as well and flush it two or three times and do the bleach routine.
I haven't heard that one. I've, I've had similar situations, just on, sometimes this pops up on a new house construction, you gotta do that and, um, you just put the chlorine.
But anyways, I guess the bottom line is, is I'm, I'm good with it. I just don't know who to hire to do it in the first one. I'm not volunteering to do it.
Need to hire anybody, just need to go to Walmart and buy bleach.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
That's all I.
And then ret, after you to get the smell out, retest the water.
Yeah.
Okay, give it a shot.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I think it's worth, it's worth, I think, the cheap shot. I mean, I, I mean, if it's, if it can't be fixed that way, then we gotta talk about other options, but we should at least try that first.
Water companies have said, not said that I can cure the E. coli with that, but I will give it a shot if that's the board's wishes.
How, how they require you do it is you put the bleach in the well and if you go to that water place, they'll tell you how much to make out or whatever for you, but you have to put it in your lines. Turn all the lines on till you smell bleach coming out, shut it off, let it sit overnight. Then turn it back on the line, run it till you don't smell bleach anymore, but it has to set no lines overnight, otherwise you can't just set the well.
Yeah.
Put it everywhere in the line, shut it off, sits overnight, then the next day you start running it till you don't smell bleach in.
Yeah.
That is how I always start it.
Yeah, that's actually what the water companies will recommend for the colliform.
Yeah.
The, the one above it. This is E. coli.
Oh, okay, well, maybe that's.
So what you did describe is just we go to the recommendation, that's a colliform recommendation. I actually had done that, well, actually it is on the station.
That's for bacteria, what I'm talking about.
Well, actually the E. coli is a bacteria, but the federal standard's on that. Actually, if you read, did you get a packet? The second page or the third page in the packet actually talks some about it and then the, the fourth page talks even more about it.
So I have none of the E. coli, but maybe that's different.
But I, I will give it a shot. It, uh.
It lists on that third page under the E. coli that if you do the chlorination procedure and have your well retested, so it lists the same procedure for both.
Usually with the E. coli, you've got a subject, uh, sometime.
Sometime, but it could be, it's a dug well, it could be an animal, it could be anything. It, I don't think it's as uncommon as.
Yeah, it's follow the enclosed chlorination procedures and retest your well. So I think, I think it's, I think we should, we need to at least try that first. It said, uh, the actual chlorination procedures in here? Or is that just referring to part of the document?
First, if you download, you can, uh, and it's actually what Calvin just described. That's actually the.
Yeah.
Chlorination process. It's not the certification process for a well that has actually had E. coli bacteria in it, cause I've actually met with some water people on, on other wells before and it's actually what they're gonna tell you is that you actually need to pump the well completely out a couple of times, chlorinating it in the process and scrub the wells, walls as well. But I will use the chlorination process.
Let's give it a try.
But sure, it's gonna cure it, that's all right, I'll give it a shot and try it.
If it doesn't cure it, well.
Do what we need to do, I guess.
Yep. Okay?
If it's unsuccessful, it's definitely something we need to get, have on the radar, so, cause I can't have people in.
No, we get that, we get that.
But go back to something you said, you said that the, did you say that the, the water from the well is not expected to be potable? What, what were you talking, you, you said something about the quality of the water and what it was expected to be when you were talking earlier. I was reading through the report, so I would, I was, I was kinda listening and reading at the same time, but it sounded like you said something about the quality of the water wasn't, wasn't expected to be of a certain level or something like that.
Uh, but then I did talk about that, I don't think we should be asking them to come back from a rescue call and use it for sanitization.
Maybe that's what we're talking about, yeah.
If I can't clean it, uh, you know, just because the rules say, hey, you shouldn't drink that, I, I don't wanna wash my hands and that. So I don't know, is I wanna ask people to work for the town to derm to wash their hands and that either.
Yeah. So, I mean, certainly, I mean, in the meantime, yeah, yeah, I don't know, is there, um, is there some sort of temporary, like, uh, commercial water service we would need to bring in while, while the well's going through that process or, I mean, maybe you need, maybe look at that too. I don't know if there's a temporary water.
Hopefully it'll take a few days.
I can maybe do some sanitization stuff or something like that, cause really the, the primary thing is gonna be actually coming back from a call and they're actually, in a guidelines, that they should be washing their hands before they, they're pretty much, I mean.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, in, in the meantime, do we need to have some sort of a different water supply available?
Yeah, washing stations or something like that, that will maybe fill a gap or something like.
Cause even if we didn't, I mean, regardless of whether we, even if we said tonight, yeah, okay, let's drill a well tomorrow, it's gonna be a while before you get water out of that well.
Even if you said yes tonight, man, even though my recommendation is ultimately to replace it, I, I think for us to spend a bunch of money trying to cure a problem, it'd be throwing money away when inevitably for a municipal building, we should probably look at trying to do the, the drill well. And I, I realize from talking to the companies and stuff, even if you said yes tonight, I'm not gonna have them there drilling a well tomorrow, they're only gonna have the interim. But because of the timeframe and construction the way it is, if we are gonna look at trying to do it, and the other part of it is the financial aspect of it, we either need to figure out where the money could come from or get approval for the money and.
Well, we think we have that figured out. We've, we've, we've determined, Ruth's done some legwork and the board has the power to, um, approve that that money from the fire department capital account be used to, uh, drill a well if we need to, so.
Chief, I, I don't know if it's any help, but sometimes like the porta potty stations that you rent porta potties from, you can also rent.
Oh, right, that's right.
You can put cleaner water in that for say, for, as a temporary until we get this resolved. That's, that could be an option for you.
Yeah, I'll see, I'll see tomorrow what I can come up with. That, um, yeah. I know, definitely try the shot then.
Yeah.
When I had my well tested, it was close to fifteen years ago, they didn't have a positive negative for E. coli in colliform, they actually had numbers for colony forming units. And I was, it was some ridiculous, like ten times higher than the, the high end that they recommended. And so I'll be honest, I did the bleaching twice before I retested the water.
Wanna make sure.
Medical community, it made me a little nervous too. Um, things came back awesome. We were forewarned that if it was like a dead animal or something like that, to, that we should get the water retested six months later. We did, everything was great, so, you know, there is that risk being a dug well, that if there was a dead animal that fell into it or something like that, then this might resurface again. But, um, but hopefully you'll have good luck with just the, the bleaching.
Okay?
Okay, moving on. At apparatus committee, it, they met last, last month, July, we met with two different vendors. It's the one for fire apparatus and one for rescue vehicles. It, uh, mostly to discuss options, industry trends and things like that. It, uh, got a meeting scheduled for this month to actually get back together and review, uh, their recommendations and the research we'd done previously, as I talked about. We've actually looked at our response guideline, tried to determine how we could distribute equipment differently. Was that an accurate portrayal of what we actually provide for services? So hopefully it, the August meeting will be a culmination of all of those and we'll actually come very close to at least having the initial stage, if not completely having recommendations formatted. And, uh, the stipend coverage, it spoke a little bit about that before. It, hoping in September, well, not hoping, we're planning on in September to open up the weekend shifts. It, uh, and try to start staffing those, cause that's still our weak spot with these stipends or the volunteers. Done very well at getting the evenings taken care of, but weekends are still our weak spot, so. Gonna try the, uh, per diem shifts and see, I don't think we'll be able to fill them all, but maybe we can fill a few of them. Cause even the weekends, we're starting to do a little better on the weekends, but it's primarily evenings we're filling on the, the Saturday and Sunday night, not during the day, so. The stipends will, uh, per diem will definitely help take care of that. Uh, aerial operations class, I talked a little bit about that at the last meeting. It, uh, that's scheduled to start August twenty-fourth and it'll run through till September nineteenth and it's focused strictly on our, our aerial. And then, uh, later on, it, uh, from the Maine Fire Service Institute, it, they have approved to do two of the, uh, advanced fire officer classes. I know we were on the initial list, I don't know yet if we've still made it through at all and hopefully we are still on and we'll have an advanced fire off, officer class, uh, maybe late fall, early winter. NIMs four oh two, I just wanted to remind the board about four oh two class, August fifteenth at the station at six thirty. And then the, uh, just an update on some of the ongoing stuff. Last week, uh, we did the head pump maintenance and the pump tests were completed. And in twenty-two, we really didn't have that much in the way of pumps. The twenty-one was a governor issue that's actually been corrected and twenty-two has four valves that are gonna need to be, have rebuild kits on them and stuff like that. Rescue twenty-five, probably the only one that had much of anything for the way of major issues over the course of the last month. It, uh, we actually on rescue twenty-five did some work on the AC as well as we had trouble with the control, the vacuum pump control and had to send it to Casco Bay for that. While I was there, we had an oil leak that nobody could pin down and they actually did some research, found the oil leak, but we're not, it's not, it is not, uh, overwhelming. So we're gonna live with the oil leak, cause it's an eight thousand dollar leak, yeah.
And rescue is, that's like the next up for replacement, right?
Go before the town for approval, it would be a year, but so we didn't need to get about a year and a half out of it. I, I can see.
Taking the engine out of the cab.
More damage and, yeah, just being a constant thing. It's actually starting to be somewhat constant as it is. So anyway, we're gonna live with that oil leak, cause that, that actually, if you have the Casco Bay invoice on the warrant, it actually was part of their description at the very bottom. They gave a quote on repairing that oil leak. Yeah, and then truck twenty-four, it was up for its annual service and then ladder testing, it's not just on truck twenty-four, but all the ladders will be tested into September or October, so. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Guys have any questions?
And, um, if we, I don't know if we know, I'm just wondering, you know, if we needed to move on the water issue sooner than within two weeks? If we're, we're going to be convening on the fifteenth for NIMs training, like if you.
I actually.
Something by then.
I'll start the bleaching process tomorrow.
Yeah.
So I actually don't think, I don't think I'm gonna be able to send it back in and get it tested, it, uh, probably for a week, if I have two weeks actually before I can send it back in. You know, it, uh, unless I just run water steady to get it circulated, but if that, the testing process, they actually recommend that you put a hole back out of the well and cycle it, so they're actually mixing it into the well system. Bleaching process.
Yeah.
Bleaching process, so.
Okay.
Usually takes five to seven days to get the test results back, so I tell.
Oh, okay, it takes that long, okay.
I wanna say, I wanna say the ones that, uh, once you saw the results for were actually, it says it's submitted, I think it was about twenty minutes submitted. I think the envelope pulls out the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh or something like that.
Okay.
So I very much doubt if I'll have a result. If we can result back before an actual, uh, meeting.
Okay. All right, town administrator report.
Well, I put most of my stuff on the thing. Um, I. I, um, am gonna be at the town manager's annual conference tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, but I will be reachable by email or, you know, obviously you guys can call me if you want. Other than that, I, I think I'm pretty good.
Okay. All right, upcoming meetings, uh, to announce, regular selectman meetings, uh, next is Tuesday, August twenty-second is six thirty PM and Tuesday, September fifth at six thirty PM, uh, both here at the town office. Any other, Calvin, you're not on the agenda, you gotta report for us anyway?
Just overachiever, okay. Can you give us the Cliff Notes, cause we're receiving them?
I gave you yours, my guy. Okay, so.
You did, but it's the wrong date.
I did? Oh, jeez, I forgot to change the date, yeah.
We should talk about other one, Pongru.
I used last, last meeting, I thought I hit save. All right, I guess I, we'll fix the date. That should be eight eight, so, I don't know what happened there. It should be eight eight, so, I don't know what happened there. So, we got an issue on, or situation on Landline Pond Road with the, where guy wants a...
I think they were here tonight.
They were.
Yeah, she was.
Was it I missed?
Yeah, they were here during public comment. We actually had two of them, but go ahead.
Okay, so, it's a situation where the water has, for the last hundred years, well, along that road's been around and that house has been there, the water's come down, and then it has a little ponding area and then it bleeds to the right and goes down through the woods and around through her back field and down through and ends up eventually down by the neighbor's house. So, they would like a culvert put in and a ditch put along the front of their yard. I don't know why it never happened, it looked like something that probably should have happened a long time ago, would have happened naturally in, while building a road, my guess is that they probably were denied access to do that, probably the prior owner did not want to ditch there, it's the only thing I can figure, I don't know, but the road, the water is going where it's always gone. I'm hesitant to move it from where it's always gone because I'm concerned that the water's gonna get to the neighbor's house that much more quickly. The neighbor's house sits down there, it's a direct path to where this water's gonna go. It's not affecting our road, has really nothing to do with us. I met with a prior owner before we built the road, went house to house, met with each person, they were fine with it the way it was. During construction last summer, these people bought the house. He did talk to me once, I looked at it and said, I can't, I can't change the water, it's what he put across the road, it can't put across the road, the people already have water in the basement across the road, the whole cause and effect thing. Rob happened to be going by, I stopped him and he and I walked, I said, I want to show you something, so I took him up, we walked it. You know, it just, it's spending tax money to fix an issue that...
Cal, this is a new house, like last year it was built?
No, new owners.
New owners, okay.
We just bought it last summer. People that lived there before had no problem with it going where it does.
She, she mentioned something, something, an erosion issue close to, she's worried about an erosion issue near the septic area.
She says it's eroding our septic system.
I, I went down and looked at it and it looks to me no different than it ever has been.
Right, did we cause any more water to go back that way?
Zero.
So that issue has already been?
We didn't even, in fact, I had her step out on the street with me and looked up the hill from there, we didn't touch anything, we didn't ditch that section, we didn't touch it, we didn't even change the culvert, so. The water that's here now is the water that's always been. I mean, you could say maybe with a new pavement, it gets there quicker, maybe it didn't have as many potholes to get over to get there, maybe the wheel rest helped it get there. But, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, I guess if I was here, I would've seen that though.
So, yeah, so, I don't, I mean, I don't think we as a board have any reason to, like, point you in a different direction, but I would ask that you follow up with them and like explain to them that, that at least at this time, we're not going to do this work and here's why.
I will do that, so I'll make sure I move on the same page.
If we have to do it later, it's not gonna affect our finished road, right?
We're gonna have to take out their ornamental stone wall and do a lot of work, so, I mean, they have an ornamental stone wall that would ought to come out, and me personally, I wouldn't want to look at it there, but I think that's probably why there never was a ditch there, the prior owner didn't want to see one in their front lawn either, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, it's the whole thing, if you're gonna change water flow and volume, even when the water's going there already, one could argue that with a new ditch, instead of having to go all the way down around the woods and around the back lawn, now it's a direct shot so it can sit quicker, that's what stormwater's all about, it's about the time it takes to get there and slow down.
So, okay, so, yeah, follow up with them please, and on that same subject, there was another resident here that spoke before that, she's already had some conversations with you, Meredith Weaver from twenty-eight Brown Road. The culvert at the end of the driveway is he, and I guess, it's, she technically lives in Pownell, but she's, that portion of the road is technically our responsibility, I guess that's part is not in dispute, so she's, I guess, she said she has to go over her culvert two miles an hour to get in and out of her driveway because it's heaved so much and...
I would just tell you this, mine and my driveway is worse, in the town I live in.
We're not talking about yours.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's relevant.
I know, but I'm just saying that we, it is on the list, I told her to get done this year, that's, I mean, the first year was, it was something that Sean handed to me, good luck and...
She's just frustrated because it's been five years.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to figure out, and the solution I've come up with is, I really can't fix it without some major construction and tearing their trees down out of that big and...
Have you gone through that with her?
Yeah, yeah, so the solution I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take some cold mixer and go from that hump and feather it back to her driveway and just try to relieve that swell, that's about all I can do, I'll try that.
And from what she described, she'd be happy with that, she's, I mean, she mentioned a similar...
Yeah, that's what I suggested, we were gonna do, I told her and her husband and all that, that's what we're gonna have to do, is we'll get to it this year and, so.
Okay, so maybe just, maybe a follow up with her as well, just to kind of reassure that you, that she's still on your list.
Yeah.
And maybe she'd be interested in taking the trees down and getting the culvert done, but, so if we, if we can get the culvert done without doing a lot of...
Just a quick recap for me, I still don't get why we fix a Pownell's residence driveway, I'm confused.
It's a share, basically, it's...
I get the road shared, but she doesn't pay any tax revenue to the town of Durham.
Yeah, but others do.
It was a court case that decided that, with the same thing.
Oh, really?
Now, now, now I'm starting to get it.
They left that part out earlier.
Because it just doesn't make any sense.
Because the town line goes down, is, the town line is the road, the road is, center of the road is the down line, so who's gonna fix what? So I ended up going to court, I found all the paperwork because I had to figure out who was gonna pay for Brown Road at what point when we just rebuilt it, and found all the court arguments and things, and so it went to court and the judge, the court ruled that Pownell would take care of from Route nine to, and it gives you these landmarks you gotta go find, which I did, went to Freeport and worked my way backwards and sure enough, actually ended up giving them more responsibility than they had before, but brought them up to, so I have that point marked, and then Durham takes over from there to the Freeport Monument.
Right, but was that, so we have joint custody of Brown Road? Is that plowing or all road maintenance?
They just paid, they just paid a million bucks to rebuild it, but Pownell did, and half the people on one side are in Durham and the other side, the neighbors are in Pownell, and so same thing happens.
Seemed weird to me, huh?
Well, the same thing happens on North Yarmouth, I have people calling me saying, you guys are picking up brush all over town, why aren't you over here picking up brush from the storm? I said, we can't, that's North Yarmouth, North Yarmouth, they called North Yarmouth and they said, we don't pick up brush, so, they said, well, you're picking up brush for everyone else, that's not our road, so, it can be, for the first year, I was terribly confused, I didn't know what to do with it, I kept going back and forth, that's why she lost the first year, because I couldn't figure out what was supposed to be happening.
Well, I think Grant Road is the same way as well.
I, I don't think so, Grant Road, we have a different, we have a definite point.
Well, yeah, but isn't it half, isn't that, maybe it isn't a break, never mind, maybe it's not.
Yeah, it goes down so far, you can tell the difference in the tar and then it changes to the Freeport.
Yeah, but it's not on center, it's not on center.
So the courts ruled that that's the way it was gonna be taken.
Sounds like a King Solomon type of court, you know, you get fifty, fifty, cut it in half and...
Yeah, it was back when it was a county road, a county and they're going to court.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so, so, okay, then moving on to the bond, the bond project, so we're gonna have some money left, maybe it's forty, fifty, I'm still working on that number, about fifty or sixty, it might be forty or fifty, but it's gonna be some money left, over, we're gonna pave that Thursday, so, I'd like to, remember I promised I would fix Bow Hill Road, well, in doing the math, I have about fifty-five thousand or so left and I need probably seventy-five or eighty, you know, somewhere in it, and I can have those numbers for you next week, but I just wanted you to start thinking about what you want to do with that money, I mean, do you, I'd like to have some of it, the options are, you can, the way I asked you, the way it worded, it didn't tire, it didn't specifically, and I think we did that, we did that intentionally so that we would have the flexibility to put that money in other roads if, if that was the case.
Myself, I'd like to see you put as much into Bow Hill Road as possible.
Yeah, so.
Brickyard Hill is another, that's another animal.
But something's gotta be done with Brickyard.
I know, I know that, I understand that, but...
Because that's gonna be a public, public health, public safety issue.
Yep.
So, just throwing that out there, we don't need an answer tonight, but...
Well, just come back with a specific proposal.
Yeah, I mean, one option is you just turn the money all back in and put it back, or you can, so I just wanted to...
I, I, personally, I think given the state of the roads and the fact that voters have already approved the money, that as long as it's spent on roads, then we're fine, so. But that's just my opinion, that doesn't, that's not a decision, that's just my personal opinion.
All right, so just so you'll be prepared when I come back, so...
Whatever you do, don't pave the...
What's that?
Just don't pave the alley.
Don't pave the parking lot.
Yeah, right, that's right, yeah, that's a good point, yeah, don't pave the public court.
See who's watching, go ahead and do that.
Don't see who's hot off over there. So, the DEP grant, I got a call today from the engineer, the Army Corps of Engineers has a different timeline in DEP, so they didn't care what DEP said, that their cutoff date was October second, and so we can't make it October second because it's six weeks lead time on the culvert, which the engineer thought, you know, typically it's two weeks, but because of high demand this year, construction being through the roof, it's six weeks, so. The thought is that it goes out to, and I don't know, this comes back to what Jeff had said, he said, well, if you are contractually obligated this year, wouldn't that money carry through to next year? I don't know the answer to that, I don't know if we can find that out.
I think you could probably encumber the money.
He thought if it was contractually obligated in December, that then it wouldn't have go back to, but I, if you could find...
Even if it did have to go back, I wouldn't anticipate any issue.
Well, but then the whole thing is, is when do we accept? Just think about the moving parts here, we have engineering money being spent, and so, can we accept, I guess, the DEP grant? Did we accept the DEP grant? I have to figure that one part out as far as...
I thought we accepted it.
I hope so.
Well, I haven't said anything back, I've gotta sign something and send it back to them, but...
By when?
Well, they said just get it done as soon as you can.
Let's get a little more definitive on that and make sure we've met whatever that requirement is.
As long as the Cavalier.
After we just went through that public meeting.
Well, they said, you know, get it back in, there was no deadline, but essentially...
So those funds aren't earmarked?
Yeah, they're earmarked for us.
Right, so we have to use them at a cer- certain point, I would assume.
Yeah, yeah.
So we gotta get that back to them at some point.
I would assume they give us a year.
Yeah, did they give us a year to use the funds?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
But the thing is, is if we didn't get the town money, I'm trying to put, I'm trying to connect the dots here as far as us getting town affordable, and if we can't do it without that town money...
Well, we're just...
We have the town money though.
I don't want to start spending, we do for now, but if it expires on December thirty-first.
Let me see about...
If the town money expires on December thirty-first?
Remember Jeff had mentioned that it expired, so I'm trying to...
I don't think that's an issue.
Keep moving forward, keep moving forward.
We could always put it in the town meeting and they roll one.
Make sure Ruth gets that paperwork so she can review it and see the deadlines and whatever.
Yeah.
So, we are, so that's, that's basically what I've got for the, I know that we had a local contractor that really wanted to bid that, so it looks like that's gonna be off the table for...
Well, next spring.
Can we take bids now contingent on?
Well, I wouldn't want to take bids after I had, you typically, you typically get your best prices, bid stuff, if you're gonna do it next year, you want to...
What prohibits him from bidding on it? I, I missed that.
Well, the project won't be able to be done this year.
So he can still bid on it for next year?
Yeah, cool.
Yeah, so what's, that's his agenda, that has nothing to do with it.
Be first on the calendar too.
As long as they know that, I'd start it right away.
Typically, typically people don't want to bid this early because they don't know what next year workload is.
No, I get it, that's their prerogative though.
Well, that will be their workload.
Come February, come February or March, they tend to want to bid on stuff, because if something better comes along, they don't want to be bound to this project.
No, 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 get them bound to this one.
I see your chip seal there, I had, I've had a couple, that coal residents asked me about the lip that's currently outside their driveway from the first course of pavement and like when, when the apron, when will that happen?
We'll go back and shim those as soon as they get done with the chip seal.
After the chip seal, okay.
Sean said he was gonna do it, and he ain't done it yet.
Which one?
Mine.
More specific.
If you want to be specific, that's it.
What was the address? I'll check it out.
So they'll shim that in Cedar Pond?
Yeah, I looked at Cedar Pond, looked at it again today, so we're gonna cut out that bad piece, the plow ripped out last year, patch that all in together.
They're gonna, they're gonna shim to Country Lane from Cedar Pond so you guys don't tear up that road with the plow.
Yeah.
So the shimming is happening this year?
Yeah.
Not next year? Okay.
That might be a good, like, you know, kind of update, put on the website, you know, like, okay, that hole's gonna be chip sealed August twenty-first, twenty-fifth, and that's when you can expect the aprons or driveways to be done, this is when work's gonna be done on Cedar Pond, just because they're not knowing, it's crazy, because then they think that it's not gonna happen and so...
So, the, we were waiting for, I'm gonna have to get it through you over, how to update that whole thing, we were waiting.
Yeah, how to get on the internet.
We were waiting for the new co-odar to step in, license and lat load, so.
Yep. Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, what do I do with my agenda? There it is. Okay, anything else? All right, then I am going to move us into executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A personnel for the fire department.